Good morning, everyone. I'm Lisa Bender, the president of the Minneapolis City Council. And today, we have two honorary resolutions to present before we begin with the official meeting. And the first is honoring the 50th anniversary of the Minneapolis Community Education Program. And I will turn this over to Councilmember Palmasano to present the resolution.
Thank you. We have joining us today Stephen Alexander. He's a program specialist from Community Ed. And I'd like him just to share a few words about how Community Ed has been doing and some of the things that are happening in the future.
Thank you for this honor. So Minneapolis Community Education is celebrating 50 years. This year started in 1968, doing programming for all members of the city. We offer programming that is adult enrichment, adult education, 55-plus to after-school programs across the city. And so, we have continued to grow over the years, and we will continue to offer more programming. Throughout, we just received actually a community, a full-service community schools grant from the federal government that will expand our programming even more. So we're very excited to continue to serve all of the city.
That's going to be a really great partnership with our parks. I have to say my personal story. I haven't had a chance to really do any of the Community Ed programs myself, but I could not live my life, and many people here at the city could not live their life without the benefit and help of Minneapolis Kids Program for before and after-school care, which is where I just give all of my trust over to the people in Community Ed. And it's amazing, and it is a lifesaver for working parents. So, this resolution honors the 50th anniversary. I know your celebration was at Boom Island last weekend. But we wanted to say that whereas the Community Ed program was founded in 1968 through a grant from the state of Minnesota for community outreach, whereas adult enrichment provides opportunities for participants, 90% of whom don't have a student in Minneapolis public schools to get involved, where adult enrichment, 55-plus lifelong learning, access for adults with disabilities, family and aquatics programs provide opportunities to discover, be inspired, energize, and connect with the community. There's over 800 classes, trips, and activities offered, where youth programs serve over 13,000 participants in after-school and summer programs, and develop strong peer and adult relationships while fostering new skills and leadership. Whereas the adult education serves over 6,000 adults annually in its classes, including GED, college prep, English language learning, citizenship, and career pathways. And whereas Minneapolis Kids School-Aged Child Care before and after school offers opportunities for intellectual, physical, and social development. Whereas the city of Lake's Americor provides tutoring and enrichment opportunities for long-term English language learners, leading to increased academic language growth, student engagement, and parent connection to the school. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby continue to support and celebrate the mission of Minneapolis Community Education Program. Thank you for being such a special part of our city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And then the second resolution is with our friends from the American Cancer Society, and it's recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and October 5th as Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day in the city of Minneapolis. And this is an important issue for me. I am a breast cancer survivor, now eight years from diagnosis. And I want to add a special note today to say that I was pregnant when I was diagnosed and going through cancer treatment, when the federal government made sure that I was protected and had access to health insurance, even with pre-existing conditions. And for millions of cancer survivors like me and anyone with a pre-existing condition, it is terrifying to hear talks of rolling back those protections and would have significant impact on access to screening and access to the treatment that has made such a difference in my life. So that's my special note for our times today. I'll read the resolution, and then I'd love to invite you to talk more about what's coming up this month. So whereas there are more than 3.1 million women in the United States living with a history of invasive breast cancer, and whereas this year, 4,500 women in Minnesota are expected to be diagnosed with breast cancer, and 630 to die from the disease, and whereas breast cancer ranks second as a cause of cancer death in women, and whereas breast cancer screening has been found to reduce breast cancer mortality, and when breast cancers are detected at an early stage, survival is 99%. And whereas since 2002, approximately 80% of Minnesota women ages 40 and over have received a mammogram in the previous two years, and whereas only 46% of uninsured women in Minnesota have received a recent mammogram in 2010, and whereas the uninsured, underinsured, and underserved are least likely to get screening for breast cancer, which means they are more likely to be diagnosed at a late stage, when chances of survival drop to 24%. And whereas in Minnesota, non-Hispanic white women are at greatest risk of being diagnosed with breast cancer, but African-American women are at greatest risk of dying from breast cancer. And whereas women ages 15 to 54 die more frequently from breast cancer than any other cancer, and African-American women under the age of 35 die from breast cancer at three times the rate of white women, and whereas the federal government has invested more than $1.8 billion in breast cancer research since 2010, leading to the discovery of life-extending drugs, and whereas there is no cure for breast cancer. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council do hereby declare October 5th, 2018, as Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day, and October 2018 to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Minneapolis. And I also just will add before I turn it over that one of the reasons I think the American Cancer Society's work is so important is that they also invest in lifesaving research, including in a drug called Herceptin, which became available to early-stage breast cancer patients very, just a couple of years before I was diagnosed. And that drug doubled my chances of survival, and that doubled, you know, my ability to be there for my kids, first day of kindergarten, graduation from high school, maybe I'll be a grandmother someday. It's a big deal. It means a lot to a lot of women like me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council President Bender. And thank you for having us here today and for recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and the importance of continued research into metastatic breast cancer. I'm Ellie Beaver. I'm the Minnesota Government Relations Director for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. And we're so pleased to be here in Minneapolis, where we have a world-class research institution at the University of Minnesota, which is working every day to find cures for breast cancer. And we have a Hope Lodge right near the University of Minnesota for patients who are diagnosed with cancer, so that they have a place to stay while they're receiving treatment. I'd like to turn it over to my colleague Eric Knoll to talk about our Making Strides Against Breast Cancer event that we have coming up at the end of this month.
Yes, like Ellie said, my name is Eric Knoll. I work with the American Cancer Society. And I first wanted to say thank you, city council, for the great display of pink. It looks awesome. And I hope that you will all join us on October 27th at US Bank Stadium for our Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk. Last year, over 7,000 people participated, really to try to work to save lives against breast cancer. And the funds that we raise at this event go to fund our lifesaving mission, whether it's research, reducing barriers to care through providing rights to treatment for patients, lodging for patients, patient navigators to provide counseling for patients from start to finish. We're working every day to try to cure this disease, and we can't do it without the thousands of people who come to US Bank Stadium. So, we hope to see you October 27th, and yeah, great display of pink, city council. We love it.
Thank you. And also, there are donuts in room 319, if you guys would like some.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Good morning again. My name is Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. And I'll call to order this regular meeting of the city council for October 5th, 2018, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Greenham is absent. Ellison.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Fletcher.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Colleagues, we have one amendment to the agenda for this morning, a copy of which is at your desks. This is adding a new introduction of the subject matter to be referred for a public hearing at a meeting of the Elections and Rules Committee. Are there any other agenda amendments? There is a motion from Councilmember Worsami to add, under the Order of New Business, a resolution regarding procurement practices. And I think the clerk has a question.
Madam President, I do have a new item to add. The Order of New Business, bringing forward from Councilmember Worsami, a motion that would declare a state of emergency existing in a homeless encampment located in the vicinity of Franklin and Hiawatha Avenue, which would then be added with the council's approval as new business item number one.
Thank you for the clarification. So the motion is under new business, as described by the clerk, and we have that motion before us, and that has been seconded. Are there any other amendments for the agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Somo.
Second.
All of those, an approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the agenda is adopted with those two amendments. Next, we have the minutes from our regular meeting of September 21st and the adjourned meeting of September 26th for acceptance. Is there a motion?
Somo.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the referrals are made. The next order of business is a report of our standing committees. The first is our Budget Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We heard several department budget presentations this past cycle in our Budget Committee. The one that we're bringing forward to council today is a staff direction from Councilmember Schrader, directing the CFO to work with CPED and deliver a report to the Housing Committee on October 24th detailing the exploration of dedicated sources of funding for Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Myself or Councilmember Schrader would be happy to answer any questions. Oh, and I want to move that item officially.
Are there any questions or comments on the budget agenda? You know, I do have one comment. I was just checking. I emailed staff yesterday, and I'm not sure that I'm seeing a response. But I am becoming concerned about the timelines that we are putting on our staff directions. And so, I just want to note that with such a very short timeline from the staff direction, we are unlikely to get, you know, significant work or new ideas coming from staff with just, you know, a few weeks' time. And so, we may be getting just like a more brief update from them. And then I think the idea of looking for sustainable funding for affordable housing, particularly the trust fund, is very supported by the council, but would likely take more time than this particular staff direction. I see Councilmember Schrader.
That's a great point, and I concur 100%. But what I would add is that this has been studied quite extensively. There's been work by council, work by the mayor's office, work by advocates for decades. So I think it's an accurate assessment with that timeline. We will be hearing a lot of the ideas that have already been proposed, why they're feasible, why they're not feasible, and what challenges we have. I worked with staff before putting forward this staff direction, so I knew that they would be able to do their time, make the timeline. But those are great points. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'll just note, you know, with the sort of crisis timeline that we've created for our staff regarding the encampment, it's putting a lot of pressure on the same staff that are doing all of this other work. So I just want to continue to say that out loud, so we are mindful of the amount of time we're asking our staff to put in, which I think right now is well more than even their normal amount of over-full-time commitment. With that, is there any discussion further on the Budget Committee report? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. That brings us to the next committee's report, the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 16 items for approval. You'll note that there are 117 business license applications, which take up multiple pages in this report, and we are working towards trying to correct that in a coalition between licensing and the clerk's office. But item number one, items number one, two, three, four, five are individual licenses that needed public hearings. Item six are the liquor license approvals, and seven are the liquor license renewals. And I'll note there's 117 of those. Then there'll be the business license approvals and the business license renewals. Business license operating conditions encompass items 10, 11, 12, 13. Items 14 and 15 are rental license reinstatements. Item 16 is a contract amendment. So with that, I will move items 1 through 16, except in item 7, the list of 117 renewals. I am moving to delete the application of Union Liquor Store at 3219 Penn Avenue North due to a number of issues we're still trying to work out.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman has moved the EDRS, except for that one item that is under item 7 in the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. That brings us to the Housing Policy and Development Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, President Bender. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing four items forward for consideration today. The first is a land sale at 4111 Copec Avenue North. The second is a revised bond issuance for the Riverside Homes Project in Cedar Riverside. The third is a modification to a redevelopment contract with American Indian Community Development Corporation. And the fourth is approving additional Affordable Housing Trust Fund loan of up to $650,000 for the West Broadway West Building Project on West Broadway. I will move all items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. That brings us to the next committee's report, the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 16 items for approval. You'll note that there are 117 business license applications, which take up multiple pages in this report, and we are working towards trying to correct that in a coalition between licensing and the clerk's office. But item number one, items number one, two, three, four, five are individual licenses that needed public hearings. Item six are the liquor license approvals, and seven are the liquor license renewals. And I'll note there's 117 of those. Then there'll be the business license approvals and the business license renewals. Business license operating conditions encompass items 10, 11, 12, 13. Items 14 and 15 are rental license reinstatements. Item 16 is a contract amendment. So with that, I will move items 1 through 16, except in item 7, the list of 117 renewals. I am moving to delete the application of Union Liquor Store at 3219 Penn Avenue North due to a number of issues we're still trying to work out.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman has moved the EDRS, except for that one item that is under item 7 in the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. That brings us to the Housing Policy and Development Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, President Bender. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing four items forward for consideration today. The first is a land sale at 4111 Copec Avenue North. The second is a revised bond issuance for the Riverside Homes Project in Cedar Riverside. The third is a modification to a redevelopment contract with American Indian Community Development Corporation. And the fourth is approving additional Affordable Housing Trust Fund loan of up to $650,000 for the West Broadway West Building Project on West Broadway. I will move all items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The next report is from the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee, presented by the Vice Chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. The Public Health, Environment, and Civil Rights and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward five items today. The first is a acceptance of a grant from Minneapolis Public Schools for the Urban Scholars Program. Second is an agreement, authorizing an agreement with Centers for Disease Control and Prevention to host a public health associates in our Health Department. The third is accepting a grant from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for $50,000 to help with environmental services. The fourth is a revision to our Community Participation Program grievance policy. And the fifth item is amending our Collaborative Safety Strategies Program funding. This is a contract we have with Indigenous Roots that would expand the area where they can conduct outreach activities and provide support for people experiencing homelessness. I'm happy to stand with questions, but I'll also move the report forward, and all items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Council Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. I did want to just comment on item number five, the Collaborative Safety Strategies Funding Program, and extending that contract. I'm just concerned about the level of discourse that has been present online and within the encampment related to, I suppose, African-Americans at the encampment and creating disruption. The comments that I have seen suggest that there is some division in the sort of delivery of services and support and care, and it's concerning to me. And I feel like we need to have some better controls on how we are using taxpayer dollars while they're being sort of used to express racist ideas. So I just want my concerns to be on the record.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Is there any other comments or discussion? I will note that we did receive, or myself and a couple of other councilmembers, did receive communication from NCR, which is the agency within the city that is the lead contractor for this work, expressing some past work that they have done with this contractor, as well as a plan to continue those communications about online activity. I do think it is probably a good time to work together with staff to review our policies about how we, you know, what kind of agreements we have in place with contracting organizations to make sure that the values that the council vice president reflected are adhered to with contracts with organizations that the city is funding. I don't know if there are any other comments or ideas. Councilmember Ellison.
I just wanted to affirm what the council vice president was saying. You know, for folks who might be confused about maybe what happened, there were some Indigenous organizers who are doing great work, but then who were saying negative things about black people online, saying, making broad generalizations about black men specifically. And while, you know, I think that some of the organizers and some activists who are involved in homelessness advocacy, who are black, have sort of, I think, been in conversation about how to resolve that issue, and I'm happy for that. But I also just want to, and so I don't want to hold up this, what we're moving forward here, but it is a concern, and I just want to affirm what the council vice president is saying, and share that concern, so, yeah.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye on items 1 through 4, no on item number 5.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Now we have the report of the Transportation and Public Works Committee, presented by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee forwards 12 items today. Item one is the Traffic Signal Construction Project Appropriation Increase. Item two is the License Agreement with Minneapolis Park and Rec Board for Traffic Signal Easement. Item three is a contract amendment with Diversified Infrastructure Services for Small Diometer Sanitary Cleaning and Construction Change Orders. Item five is a contract amendment with Meyer Construction for the Hennepin-Lindale Corridor Reconstruction Project. That goes from Franklin Avenue West to Dunwoody Boulevard. Item six is the Contract Amendment with Minneapolis Refuge Incorporated for the Collection of Refuge, Recycling Yard Waste, and Organics. Item seven is the Contract Amendment with Meyer Contracting Incorporated for the East River Road Rail Crossing Improvements. Item eight is Request for Proposal for Processing Disposal of Wasteyard and Organics. Item nine is the Non-Governmental Tax Exempt Parcel Streetlight Operation Fee Assessment. Ten is similarly for the Maintenance Assessment for Non-Governmental Tax Exempt Parcels. Item eleven is the Grant Application to Met Council for Rehabilitation of Private Sewer Lateral and Connections. And the final item is the Bid for Pump Station Number Seven Standby Power Outdoor Construction Project. Madam President, I move all items as submitted.
Councilmember Reich has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye on items one through four, no on item number five.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes on the report, except for number five, which has 11 ayes in one name.
All right. That carries, and that report is adopted. Now we have the report of the Transportation and Public Works Committee, presented by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards 12 items today. Item one is the Traffic Signal Construction Project Appropriation Increase. Item two is the License Agreement with Minneapolis Park and Rec Board for Traffic Signal Easement. Item three is a Contract Amendment with Diversified Instruction Infrastructure Services for Small Diometer Sanitary Cleaning, authorizing that increase of the contract for the amount listed. Item four is the Contract Amendment with Diversified Infrastructure for Large Diometer Sanitary Sewer Cleaning and Construction Change Orders. Item five is the Contract Amendment with Meyer Construction for the Hennepin-Lindale Corridor Reconstruction Project. That goes from Franklin Avenue West to Dunwoody Boulevard. Item six is the Contract Amendment with Minneapolis Refuge Incorporated for the Collection of Refuge, Recycling Yard Waste and Organics. Item seven is the Contract Amendment with Meyer Contracting Incorporated for the East River Road Rail Crossing Improvements. Item eight is Request for Proposal for Processing Disposal of Waste Yard and Organics. Item nine is the Non-Governmental Tax Exempt Parcel Streetlight Operation Fee Assessment. Ten is similarly for the Maintenance Assessment for Non-Governmental Tax Exempt Parcels. Item eleven is the Grant Application to Met Council for Rehabilitation of Private Sewer Lateral and Connections. And the final item is the Bid for Pump Station Number Seven Standby Power Outdoor Construction Project. Madam President, I move all items as submitted.
Councilmember Reich has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report from our Ways and Means Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee has five items to bring forth today. The first item is a legal settlement claim by Khalid Nur Adam. The second item is the purchase of builder's risk insurance policy with the Travelist Property Casualty Company of America for the new public service building. The third item is a collective bargaining agreement for the 911 Supervisors Unit from 2018 through 2020. The fourth item is another collective bargaining agreement. This is for the Supervisors Unit from 2018 through 2019. And the last item is also a collective bargaining agreement for the Laborers' Unit from 2018 through 2020, and I move to approve all these items.
Councilmember Worsami has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Finally, we have the report from our Zoning and Planning Committee, presented by the Committee Chair, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. The Zoning and Planning Committee brings forward four items today. Number one is the passage of an ordinance amending the Title 21 of the Code of Ordinances, providing for a moratorium on the establishment of new tobacco product shops and the issuance of new tobacco licenses. Number two is the denial of an application for rezoning of the property at 2606 Penn Avenue North. Number three is the approval of the determination that the Environmental Assessment Worksheet is not required for the art and architecture building development, as well as the adoption of CPED's findings. Along with us, you will have in front of you additional findings prepared by the City Attorney's Office and a corresponding motion. My motion will be to amend number 3.2 to include the adoption of the attorney's findings in addition to those prepared by CPED. Number four is the approval of the rezoning application for a property located at 3215 33rd Avenue South. I move items one through four, along with any motion in front of you regarding number three.
Councilmember Schrader has moved the committee report. What was the last part?
Also the motion for number three.
Oh, yeah, thank you for finding the fact. Is there any discussion on the zoning and planning committee report? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the order, the next order of business is notices of ordinance introductions, and we have three notices today. First, Councilmember Schrader gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the zoning code to limit lot combinations in lower-density zoning districts. Second, Councilmember Ellison gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the housing code, to amend provisions related to required disclosure notifications related to lead paint. And third, Councilmember Goodman gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance related to administrative citations. Are there any questions on any of those notices? Seeing none, those notices are given and no further action is required. Next on the agenda is the introduction and referral calendar. The first pursuant to notice is a motion by Councilmembers Fletcher and Cunningham to give first reading to and refer to the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee the subject matter of an ordinance related to the powers and duties of the fire chief and related department activities. Second pursuant to notice, Councilmember Reich moves to give first reading to and refer to the Transportation and Public Works Committee the subject matter of an ordinance related to streets and sidewalks to amend requirements related to sidewalk construction work in the public right-of-way. And third pursuant to notice, we have a motion by Councilmember Gordon to give first reading to and refer to the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee the subject matter of an ordinance related to the small and underutilized business enterprise program, addressing updated procedures and amending the program's sunset date. I'm going to ask if there's any questions on those items with the prior notice given. Any questions? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say no. That carries, and those three subject matters have been given their first reading and referred to the Standing Committee in the next cycle. Next, we have a motion by Councilmembers Palmasano, Cunningham, and Ellison to introduce, give first reading to, and refer to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee the subject matter of an ordinance related to off-sale liquor spacing restrictions and licensing requirements in consideration of liquor, wine, and beer licenses. This item was not previously noticed, and so it would require unanimous consent for introduction in this cycle. Are there any questions from councilmembers on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? That carries, and the subject matter has been introduced, given its first reading and referred to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee in the next cycle. Finally, we have the item added to our agenda this morning. This is a motion by Councilmember Ellison to introduce, give first reading, and refer to the economic, excuse me, the Elections and Rules Committee for a public hearing to be held on Wednesday, October 17th at 10:30 a.m. to consider amendments to the city's Code of Ethics related to conflict of interest, outside employment, statements of economic interest, and definitions. Are there any questions from councilmembers on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say no. That carries, and the subject matter has been introduced and referred to, given first reading, and referred to the Elections and Rules Committee for a public hearing at the meeting on October 17th. The next order of business is resolutions, and we have the two items today, which were presented prior to the meeting. The first was the Honorary Resolution Recognizing the 50th Anniversary of the Minneapolis Community Education Program, and the second is the Honorary Resolution Recognizing October 2018 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Recognizing Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day. Are there any comments from councilmembers? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say no, and that carries, both of those resolutions are adopted. And next, we have, under the order of motions, a motion from Councilmember Gordon to discharge the Housing Policy and Development Committee from further consideration of an ordinance related to the advanced notice requirements on the sale of multifamily rental dwellings to refer the subject matter to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee in the next cycle. Are there any questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Goodman.
Madam President, I just wanted to note that the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is taking up this issue of advance notice. Our staff and community work is complete, and we are taking this issue up for a public hearing on the 23rd of the month. And so I just want to make sure folks know this is not discharging because we're not doing its discharging to move forward. And I'll also note, to be fair, that a large body of work with regard to contact on premise is also coming through for a public hearing in that same meeting, the 23rd of October.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon? Any further comments? Okay, seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? That carries, and the subject matter is now referred to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee. Next is the order of unfinished business, and we have a proposal to amend the city's paid parental leave policy, which was brought forward from the Executive Committee in the last cycle and postponed to this meeting. I'll recognize Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to let you know that since the last meeting, Council Vice President Jenkins and I have met with HR. We have before you the stapled packet, and I think that we've cleared up any misunderstandings and such in this policy. Before you is a substitute RCA that we would like to sub in for the previous RCA. And on the very front page, you'll see that we'd like to move to amend the paid parental leave policy as follows. Instead of to remove, to move eligibility criteria into the paid parental leave procedures, which are attached and for your review. We have with us today Katie Colagi and Alicia Prince, in case there are any questions on this ordinance. Essentially, what our intention was behind this ordinance and what we are comfortable saying before you that we've achieved today is to simply increase the amount of time that people can take, the existing three weeks of paid parental leave for city employees. No eligibility of people has changed, so I'm happy to answer any questions on that and might call on staff to do so as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
I just want to thank you for taking some time and cleaning this up. When this came through Executive Committee, I highlighted this possible concern about domestic partnerships. I think there's, it might not be the right time to strip it out of this and moving these eligibility requirements into the procedures, and makes a lot of sense, so we make sure we aren't going to have any unintended consequences, so appreciate that.
Thank you. Is there any further comment or discussion? Councilmember Schrader?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to commend the authors on this. As a young parent, you know, you weren't, you want to be there for your kids in this such important time, and it's such a difficult time to be doing that with a very busy career as well, so I thank you for this.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, and I just wanted to respond in saying that this is mostly the work of staff, so thank you to Ms. Colagi, Ms. Prince, and Susan Trammell for your help in helping us get this sorted.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we have, Councilmember Palmasano has moved to approve the substitute paid parental leave policy. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno. Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that is adopted. Now we have the item added to our agenda, which would be under New Business. This is New Business Item Number One, and it's a motion by Councilmember Palmas, or excuse me, Councilmember Worsami, who moved to amend the agenda to include, under the order of new business, a motion declaring a state of emergency existing in the homeless encampment located in the vicinity of Franklin in Hiawatha. And we have a motion with some more detail about particularly related to our ability to enter into contracts and incur obligations related to our rules and regulations that would normally be followed. Councilmember Worsami, do you want to speak to this, or do you want me to ask staff to present?
I'll speak to it a little bit. Basically, we've all been through the process of relocating the encampment or creating the navigation center. And if we follow the normal city procedure, it's going to take us months to get everything done. So that's why the staff has recommended to make this motion in order to expedite all our activities and make sure that we get the navigation center set up and running before we enter winter. So that's the theory behind it, and we can call up staff to give us further details.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Gordon. Thank you.
I wanted to speak in support of this. I actually, when we started thinking about what's going to be the solution for the encampment, it became pretty clear to me early on that it's going to take some extreme measures that are outside the normal scope of things. And I have been on the council for a while, and I have seen us declare states of emergency. We had a big storm in South Minneapolis that knocked down a lot of trees, and we declared something about that so that we could be flexible and using it as a tool so that we could help address those needs. There was a tornado, there was a bridge collapse, and there's other things. There's already been three deaths at this encampment, and we are all committed, and we debated this, and I think, and agreed that we need to do more, and we need to move quickly. I see this as one way to get there. I think we also need to probably engage with the mayor and with our staff and talk about declaring a state of emergency through the normal process, which we do so so that we can address the other things that we're thinking of doing, which may bump up against building codes and other obstacles in the way, but which is exactly why the state has crafted some laws about declaring states of emergency for what we can deal with. So I think this is a legitimate step. Hopefully, we can continue the discussions and make sure that we also have a path so that we can bring the resources as quickly as possible to address this crisis, if not emergency, that's going on in our city.
Thank you. Council Vice President Jenkins, and then Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly recognize the urgency of this situation. I'm curious if we can have staff or city attorney explain, as I was not, have not been on the council during the declaration of an emergency situation, what that means and what are the ramifications and actions that can be taken over and beyond what the situation that we're dealing with at the encampment.
Yes, thank you. I think that would be helpful at this time, and I know Councilmembers probably have more to say. Does that, the city attorney?
This motion would authorize city staff to shorten the procurement and bidding requirements in order to be able to prepare the Red Lake Nation site for demolition and in order, my understanding is, in order to procure the trailers. It would not allow the city to issue declarations of martial law or go beyond that. So this would be under Minnesota Statute, Section 12.37, which is fairly narrow in scope.
Thank you. Do you have further questions, Council Vice President?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Ms. Segal. Not at this particular moment, but I'm pretty sure I will.
Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say that I appreciate Councilmember Worsami bringing this forward today, and the topic of declaring an emergency has not been new because previously, when we were working with MUD, there was a conversation about requesting FEMA trailers, and in order to request FEMA trailers, a request that would come from the tribes, that there would have to be some kind of declaration from the city. And so this has been kind of in the milieu of the conversation for a while now. I'm happy to see that other folks have been working on this to bring this forward and help expedite this process, because that's clearly been very important for us as a council to resolve this issue and to help folks who we know are out there in these weather conditions, sleeping out in tents that are probably not equipped for that now and won't be soon for the more harsh weather. So I'm going to be supportive of this, and I also just wanted to share that, as Councilmember Gordon has stated, we've seen now three deaths at the camp, and we did have a meeting this morning with the mayor's office and some of the membership at MUD to see if there's any immediate shelter that can be put in place for folks, especially families with very small children, or pregnant women, or elders who are a little bit more vulnerable in these situations. And so there is a lot of work happening, I think, on this topic, and I appreciate all of us being able to kind of come together and team up and sort of tag-team, I guess, the conversation, because I think there are so many different needs here. So thank you, Councilmember Worsami, for bringing this forward, and I will be supporting this today.
Thank you. I put myself in queue. I do have some more questions, I think probably for CPED staff. So I have a little bit of detail on a budget, which I requested from staff, but I wondered if you might be able to share some of those details with my colleagues, and I think our staff is coming up. I just, I want to reiterate my concern that we are making a series of decisions that is walking us down a path with very little information about where we're going as a final result here, and I'm really concerned about what that final result is, and I don't want to give our staff the impression that we want them to continue down a road unless we're really sure that's where we're going. And it seems like where we're going is spending $1.5 to $2 million on trailers. I still haven't heard from anyone with expertise and housing people who are unsheltered that that is a recommended strategy or why that strategy is recommended, other than we can't find anything else. So I just, and we don't have a timeline with any detail to it, or I have this little bit of a sketched-out budget, but I just, and I know that staff has been asked to do this work, so I just want to give you the opportunity to help us understand a little bit more in detail and just understand like how this particular next urgent decision is falling in a line of urgent decisions that is walking us down a road here without really the full picture of information.
Madam President and Councilmembers, David Frank from CPED, here with my colleague Chuck Lutz, who's been doing a lot of this work. Council President, to your question, what we have been working on is a budget, which I will describe for you and your colleagues right now, and our intention is to be at the Ways and Means Committee in this coming cycle, on the 16th, for a fuller report on the budget and the timeline, and asking to encumber, allocate, the beginnings of this potential city expenditures for this project. So Ways and Means, this coming cycle. The reason that this motion by Councilmember Worsami today is necessary is because in order to hit the timeline, which we described to you in some of our recent meetings, of having the navigation center ready by early December, we need to work outside of the box in terms of our regular procurement processes, which, if we followed, would certainly not allow for hitting that schedule. So we're asking you to take, or the recommendation is that you take this motion, this step today so that we can keep the work going and get ready to execute contracts, should you say yes with the work that we are bringing forward to Ways and Means this coming cycle. So the, again, the order here, I understand, is a little unusual, but we feel like that's what you've asked us to do, to hit a very aggressive schedule and have the navigation center ready by early December. And in order to do that, knowing that we don't have to follow the typical procurement rules is something that we need to know now. So if we need to, that will take much longer, and early December won't be possible. So on the presumption that you want us to hit that schedule, that's what this motion is about. Council President, to your question, the budget that we have worked out so far for the city costs, and I will just characterize these as distinct from the Red Lake Nation Affordable Housing Project. So we have pulled those apart, the demolition, which would have happened anyway, the environmental work in the buildings before they're demolished, which would have happened anyway, those are housing project costs and are not included in what I'm about to describe. We've done, and the Red Lake Nation and their team have done great work with the grant funders, so that the environmental work and the demo work, which was to be funded, will be funded by those grant sources, and under, we think we have those in hand. So the city costs, we're not asking you to approve today, fuller description at Ways and Means, the city costs we expect to be in the range of $1.5 million. That does not include the costs to operate the site and provide the services, the navigation services we've described, and it's also worth noting that we're not yet positive who that operator will be, so the costs for that are not included. The $1.5 million that I'm describing now are city costs for what I will loosely call the capital, to set up the site, do the property management of it, but not the navigation services by an operator, and then to remove the trailers from the site by the end of May, when Red Lake Nation needs the site cleared, under our working understanding with them, so their housing project can get started. So I'll pause there. So in response to your question, that's why the timing that we're asking for the procurement exception, if you will, now is so important, and that's our working understanding of what the budget is, with much more information at Ways and Means this coming cycle.
Mr. Frank, is the intention to then go forward with procuring trailers? That has been made as a final decision, and by whom?
Madam President, yes, what we are working on is trailers because of the environmental condition of the property, and that it can't be remediated on the timeline to have the navigation center open in early December. It will happen before the housing project happens, but it can't happen and still hit the navigation center timeline. The buildings will be remediated and then torn down, and then the site will be used with trailers, because there will still be environmental contamination underground. Trailers are necessary because they're about a foot in the air, with airspace underneath that can have a fan to keep the air moving, and that's a necessary thing, given that the site will still have underground environmental issues at the time that it's used for the navigation center.
Thank you. And I just have one question for the city attorney, and then two comments. Ms. Segal, could you help us understand the powers that this motion would give to staff in terms of spending money without approval by the council?
Under Minnesota statutes, Section 12.37, the statute would allow the city to exercise powers to respond without what is referred to in the statute as time-consuming procedures and formalities prescribed by law pertaining to the performance of public work, entering into contracts, incurring of obligations, employment of temporary workers, rental of equipment, purchase of supplies and materials, limitations upon tax levies, and the appropriation and expenditure of public funds. For example, including but not limited to publication of ordinances and resolutions, publication of call for bids, provisions of civil service laws and rules, provisions relating to low bids and requirements for budgets. So it would allow the short-circuiting of notice and time requirements. For clarity's sake, you could add to this motion that any expenditure of funds or appropriation of funds, that you would want that to be brought before council, except as, you know, is allowed now under our current structure in a non-emergency setting.
Thank you, and it would be my intention to not support this motion without an amendment as the city attorney just described. That's my position as one council member. I just have a couple of comments. I just, I don't want to give our staff the impression that we want them to go forward at all cost with such little information. And again, that's my perspective as one council member. I think there's a big difference between a sense of urgency under which we're making good decisions and a sense of panic under which we're making bad decisions. And I don't have enough information to know that spending $1.5 million on trailers with no identified operator is a good decision, and I feel really uncomfortable continuing to make decisions with five minutes' notice to review the materials and giving, again, the impression that we want to just keep moving forward down a path here that I'm just not sure is the right one with such little information. I mean, I'm getting an email this morning that says that the group of people who is meeting twice a week is just now identifying a project manager, and it just seems to me that there's a lot of work to do to bring together the stakeholders, particularly those who are working most closely with people who are living at the encampment today, to understand that this large investment of funds is going to get us something that people actually want to live in and is actually helping solve the problem that we're all working toward. So I know there are a lot of other colleagues who have questions or comments. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, and I certainly appreciate the concerns of the council president, and I'm glad that we have people who are looking at the processes. My understanding, and staff, I think, also articulated that expenditures will be coming back to the Ways and Means Committee, that we'd be crafting a budget, and we'd be moving forward on those, and I certainly support those, and I think if there was a written amendment saying that, you know, before expenditures are made, they will be reviewed by the council through our normal processes for us to consider, I could see adding that to this. It's clearly my understanding. I don't know if you remember the last time we met and talked about this as a council about it, but we heard from the Red Lake Nation that they thought they could move quickly, as I was probably making a speech about how December 1st is way too late, and it's getting cold, and it's getting rainy, and they talked about how they thought they could. Then they thought the main obstacle was going to be the city, and I think I made a commitment, and we all did, and said, well, we don't want the city to be the obstacle necessarily in making the progress, and I think this is just a small, modest step that we can take so that we can comply with state law and move forward, starting to get somebody to come in and demolish the buildings or approve that activity that might involve the expenditures of city funds, maybe that we've even procured elsewhere to help with this other project that's coming. I mean, it's a complicated issue there, but we already have money set aside to do something, probably approved for demo through this affordable housing project that's going to be coming later. So I don't want us to suddenly say, the only thing that's going to delay us is that we have to go through our contracting and procurement process necessarily, when I believe the residents of Minneapolis would think that it's not necessary in a situation like this. So I'll be supporting it, but I'm saying I'll support another amendment, and I'm happy to talk a full seven minutes and another seven later if it takes us that long to get one in writing before us so we can legitimately vote on it, but I'm sure you don't want me to do that. But I did also want to mention that I'm concerned that this statute maybe isn't going to go far enough. I don't see us, so the tents that are up there right now isn't a legal housing situation right now as it is, and I'm not sure that the trailers are either. I think there's going to be a state building code, and there's going to be other issues about it. So I want us to be ready for the next step that we have to take, to say we need to get outside some rules so that we can, even if they're long houses that get put up without a foundation on blocks or something, so there's a fan there, or whatever we end up calling them, although clearly, we've all been hearing about the trailers as the way to get there, and I think we've actually also got people engaged in figuring out how can they be utilized so that they will appeal to the residents, and so people will live there, and so that they'll meet the needs, and I think there's lots of discussions and work that's already going along that path. But I just, I guess that's just warning us that this emergency declaration might ultimately have to be expanded next, and what would really help is if we could have conversations early about what those are, so it doesn't happen the Friday morning before the council meeting where we suddenly realize that the mayor might have to declare something else, or we might have to pass another short-term resolution. So I know key people are hearing me now, and let's, so let's try to get that all set up and in position, and if it should come through a committee first, or something like that, or if the mayor should meet with the leadership of the council about it, that would be great too, but let's try to make sure that we're planning for the next unusual steps we have to take to get this thing going. And hopefully, that was enough time for everybody, you know, let the other people speak now.
Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you. I just want to echo the concerns of the council president, as well as Councilmember Gordon. First and foremost, you know, I think it was very well put that we need to operate with all urgency, but not in a panic, and while I think that that's, I feel a little bit better that this will be going to Ways and Means, that this is very clearly not a blank check, that we're still debating what is the best solution and finding what's the most economical solution, because we are, when it comes down to it, this is, again, we're trying to do new things without new money, and we're spending a lot of money on a temporary solution. So how do we balance that with the people that have had need for years? The second, I think Councilmember Gordon's right to put out the next emergency. We really have not gotten this clear through the state building code. It's a very big concern of mine of how these temporary shelters are going to meet state building code, how we will be able to go forward on this. So I just want to bring that up and hope, and kind of echo that we'd like a little more notice to be able to dive into that instead of having it be a kind of panic emergency.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President, and I share the concerns that were brought up. I think my question for staff on this really has to do with the language, and I hope I'm not getting into semantics here, but homelessness is a crisis in our city. It's not new. I view it as an emergency situation, especially with winter coming, but why just this camp, then? Why just this encampment? What about all the other hundreds of people across our city that are dispersed? And why is it not a citywide emergency, then, to take care of those individuals as well? Why is it just a state of emergency for this encampment?
Madam President, me.
Mr. Frank.
Madam President, Councilmember Johnson, please don't read anything in Councilmember Worsami's motion to suggest that homelessness is not an emergency, in that sense, all across the city of Minneapolis. It certainly is. What we understand Councilmember Worsami's motion to accomplish is, in a tailored way, to say that as we work to address this part of that issue, the encampment and the creation of the navigation center, that the city's procurement rules would be suspended as to our response to this piece of the homelessness crisis and the creation of the navigation center. So not encumbering funds, not saying that this is our solution to the entirety of the homelessness issue in the whole city, but as we respond to this part of it, to the encampment and the creation of the navigation center, that the procurement rules are the thing we would work outside of in this regard.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. I think our city attorney mentioned the possibility of adding language, that this would have expenditures go through our committee structure. Did I miss that? Okay, you have that in email. I will review my email. Thank you.
Councilmember Allison.
I just want to echo a lot of the concerns. I think that some of the reasons that, and I get that we're moving fast, and I get that, you know, we're trying to be responsive, but some of the reasons that I think this comes off as like panicky as opposed to, you know, urgent, is because council members are learning about these things on the dais, last minute, not getting calls, that kind of thing. In my short time in office, I've had to deal with an emergency housing situation in my ward, and it took a lot of sort of conversations with my colleagues, it took a lot of interaction with the mayor, and I would say that in this instance, and we got to a point where everybody felt like we were making the right decision, in this instance, you know, it's like we're making, being asked to make a decision kind of on blind faith, and I'm certainly not averse to a bit of risk, but, you know, this does feel like a very kind of jarring way to be communicated with, and it makes it really difficult to know whether you're making sort of a tough decision or a panicked decision. So I just want to echo that concern, and I know that this is, that this motion is coming from my colleague, Councilmember Worsami, but I also know that a lot of this has been conversations with the mayor's office, and I feel a little bad to have Mr. Frank up here answering questions that I think possibly maybe some of the mayor's staff should be answering, and so I'm not sure, I'm going to have to, you know, in the next few minutes here, decide where I'm falling on this, and I'm just still not quite sure. Also, I do want to highlight that, and I think, and this has kind of been mentioned by a few of my colleagues already, that the current circumstance is already outside of the law, right? And we've sort of softly condoned the camp, because I think that we've, you know, you know, we don't want to be in there evicting people, right? And so, and maybe this is the inner graph artist in me, but, you know, my attitude is like, if we're already breaking the law anyway, right, then like, then why are we then going to like sort of cement this language in a way, what we're saying is giving us flexibility, but a lot of us are still up here trying to determine what even what we're looking at. So, you know, I'm sure I just made the city attorney very nervous with everything I've just said. But, yeah, I don't know. That's kind of how I'm feeling as it stands.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess, you know, I have some questions and concerns that I expressed earlier around the racism or anti-blackness that is being displayed at the camp. So my question would be, who can be there? If this is taxpayers' dollars that's supporting this, it seems like every resident in the city of Minneapolis should have access to this facility, and I wonder, from Councilmember Conno, there's been discussions about federal assistance or FEMA assistance, so has there been an application, or will there be an application if this emergency situation is declared? And then if we move forward with acting on this, and there is a FEMA application, can that be retroactive?
I'm not sure who can answer that question, if it's the city attorney's office, or coordinator's office, or the mayor's office is not here.
City Coordinator, do you, otherwise I can try my best here based on my recollections, and then we can, we will research this. I know that Barrett Lane is not here now, but we can provide you a for certain answer, but go ahead, City Coordinator.
Councilmembers, Nurya Rivera, Vandermine, City Coordinator, to the best of my recollection, this is not actual a declaration of emergency that might trigger some potential ask to FEMA. This does not qualify for that. However, we are employing emergency management to help us, as they do with other crises or other needs, to see if there are trailers, or if there are other things in our arsenal that we can move forward. But my understanding that this is not, in fact, an actual declaration that would trigger and be, that would qualify for an emergency under FEMA.
And then there was the question of who, or how are we regulating who is able to access this navigation center?
Excuse me. Council Vice President Jenkins, so some of those are decisions that we're continuing to determine. I'll say that we had really good meetings. We have twice-weekly meetings with our coalition, which now includes Red Lake. We are figuring out, as we think about it, what does that look like in terms of services? And I'm really pleased to say that we had just received, as of yesterday, a census that Red Lake commissioned with their consultant on just to do a census of those at the encampment. There are currently 103 tents, 191 individuals there. We now have, for the first time, a really accurate breakdown of how many are families, how many are fighting with a certain types of addiction, and what does that look like? So that will help us map out what programs and services will be applicable for folks, and then therefore, what funding streams that we have. And I say "we" as the royal "we," the coalition of the state, the county, the tribe, MUD, and ourselves. So we're in that process now. We've also identified how many families and children there are, and so that will, that is a priority for the county. One of the mechanisms that we're doing right now is employing those very same outreach folks to help connect those services that we may have, to particularly prioritize families if that's moved forward. But the goal of the navigation center is to provide a temporary space for any of the residents of the encampment. We are using a housing-first model, which is a low-barrier housing model, which says that, quite frankly, while you cannot use, you cannot actively use inside the trailer, because we would be violating a variety of federal laws, if you are intoxicated, or if you are high, that is still a place for you to come. It is a housing-first model that is employed across the nation, and it is low-barrier housing that is what we need right now.
Thank you.
I have myself in queue. I just, I want to understand from staff if we add these additional amendments. So to my colleagues, you have in front of you a potential amendment that would incorporate what the city attorney described. I think if I were making this motion, I would also move to I think if I were making this motion, I would also move to strike securing and securing the temporary housing in order to be able to support anything like this. I just don't have enough information to approve to staff to do that right now. But I wanted to understand from Mr. Frank or whomever from CPED if this, just a little more understanding of the sense of urgency of this timeline over the next two weeks, knowing that you'll be coming to Ways and Means and then to the council again, so what needs to happen within that two-week time period? And if we're asking you to come back before you spend money, maybe then we're not doing this after all. I mean, perhaps that just brings us back to the normal process, which you would come to Ways and Means, and then we would approve or not approve proposals that would come through the council meeting in two weeks.
Madam President, you mentioned, I think, about three things there I'd like to respond to, if that's okay. So first of all, to your amendment, the one that's printed on the page, that's not at, I shouldn't say it this way, but that's not at all an issue. This was our intent. We will be at Ways and Means to ask for funding appropriation and enter into specific contracts. So this was the intent. Having it here, I know you're not asking, but that's fine. This was the intent. You mentioned striking securing the temporary housing. I would say that's a big part of the reason that the Councilmember Worsami's motion is important, right? So the trailers, which I understand is something that the council has expressed concerns about, some of you, there's a severe shortage of trailers because of hurricanes and other issues around the country. So to procure those and have them here in time for the early December timeline to have the Navigation Center open, we need to know now, and that's what the motion is about, that we cannot use the typical procurement process. Because if we do, the added time will make it so that we can't hit the early December timeline. So I strongly suggest that one of the key reasons to, for the council to pass this motion, should you choose to, is so that we can secure the temporary housing in the timely way we're trying to.
And I know I've asked this a hundred times, but, and that would be trailers?
Madam President, yes, it'd be trailers.
And so, okay, all right. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Council President. I have a similar question along those lines, which I guess is, so I understand the urgency, and I think it's very, very important after the sort of debates around the site and the vote that we took, that we continue to reaffirm that we're moving forward with purpose, that the sort of commitments that we made when the community was in this room really asking us to do something are things that we're continuing to follow through on. At the same time, I am wondering about, do we have to vote on this today? And if you are coming to Ways and Means, and then we are going to be approving that budget request as a council, is there any consequence to us approving this alongside that? I mean, I would say proceed under the assumption that we're going to. We understand that you're bringing a budget proposal to Ways and Means that assumes this ability. Can we pass these things together? Does it cost us something to table this to next cycle so that we have a little bit more time to deliberate and make sure we understand it, make sure we have the language right, given that we're going to need to approve the expenditure before you could actually make use of this provision anyway?
Madam President, Councilmember Fletcher, yes, there'd be a big schedule impact is the short answer to your question. So we need to know now because, let me try to run through things in a little more sensical order. Red Lake Nation has selected their contractor, and knowing now that we can be working with that contractor and contracting for the trailers is the only way that we can hit that first week of December timeline, right? We have to know that the trailer order can be placed. We have to know that the, that working with that contractor is a thing that can happen, and we wouldn't know that with enough certainty to continue to do it in good faith if you said, we're going, we'll probably pass this, but we'll take it up at Ways and Means next cycle. We would have to tell that contractor, we're not sure, we'll talk to you in two weeks. And so the sort of pre-mobilization work that they've been doing in the expectation or hope that we would be able to work together and that you'd give us this permission, they'd stop, would wait until two weeks from now because we wouldn't be sure, then they would ramp back up again. So I would say it's a two-to-three-week schedule impact past the first week of December, should you choose to hold this over or vote no on it today.
And so how much money gets committed outside of that Ways and Means process over the course of the two weeks? I mean, it feels like, I'm trying to understand how we're moving forward with the work and simultaneously moving budget approvals. I'm just, I'm struggling to understand the different lanes and sort of how they're moving in parallel.
Madam President, Councilmember Fletcher, my colleague Chuck Lutz, who's sitting here, has, you know, six separate groups of people mobilizing to start to spend money only once Ways and Means has said, and the council have said, that you're ready for us to do that. But getting ready to do it is, we're sort of optimizing the timeline. If we don't know that we can bypass the standard procurement timeline, and if we don't know that we can work with just that one contractor, then we'll wait, and so will that contractor. There are no contracts that will be signed between now and a cycle from now, but knowing that they likely can be is enough to keep the contractor going, as well as the trailer providers, as well as the other architectural groups working with, et cetera.
Council President, I have one more question.
Yes, absolutely.
So if, is there a more constrained version of this that we could pass that could authorize you to do what you need to do for these two weeks so that we have a little bit more time to understand the rest of this?
Madam President, Councilmember Fletcher, I understand the spirit of the question. I would say, in my opinion, although your discussion is well-taken, this is as narrow as I'd suggest that it should be, including with the council president's amendment, if that's your, if that's your choice.
Thank you.
And perhaps, maybe Ms. Segal, could you help us understand if legally or technically we could add a two-week time period to the state of emergency or otherwise help answer Councilmember Fletcher's question? I think Councilmember Fletcher could clarify, but I think his question was, could we make this a timeframe that would cover the next two weeks before our next council meeting instead of being an indefinite change to our rules? And that might give us more time to pause and get some more of this detail. And perhaps we could renew the state of emergency if we felt more comfortable with the details provided in the next cycle?
Council President Bender, yes. You could have it be effective for two weeks, and then you could renew it at that time. You could include such language such that it would be effective until the next council meeting, at which time it will be considered for renewal. I would, I defer to the clerk on the wording of that.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher, did that help answer your question? Or did you have anything else I didn't want to?
I guess if I can jump the queue, I know that some other colleagues are in here, but in response to that, I guess I am curious, is there work that's being held up on the demolition? Are we just talking about acquiring the trailers and that needs to get approved? Is there work that gets held up on the demolition as a result of this not passing today? I'm just, I want to make sure I understand what work this is really authorizing.
Madam President, Councilmember Fletcher, all the work that needs to happen, so is the work that's at question here, right? We have, as I say, half a dozen different groups getting revved up, so in the expectation of a future appropriation, which will be before you, not right now, next cycle, that the demolition, that the trailer order, that the architectural work, that the provision of fencing and lighting and the other things, that we can just choose contractors and not have to do the bidding requirements. So it's all of it. And if I may, knowing that we can have that exemption is the thing that saves the time. So approving two weeks' worth now and then renewing it later, that doesn't save the time. Knowing that we can bypass the typical procurement procedures is the thing that saves the time.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Conno has, okay, thank, Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to everyone for the constructive comments and the amendment that you made, Council President, as well. I think it's appropriate. We should know what we're paying for and the budget and everything. But in order to push back against some comments that some of my colleagues made, one, the reason why I made this motion is because this is in my ward. You know, this is not, this is in the sixth ward, and we've housed an emergency for the last couple of months. And as you are aware, it was raining last night, it was raining a couple of days ago, heavily, we had torrential rain, and we have human beings living in flimsy tents in our ward. It's a public health hazard. There is heroin needles everywhere. It's getting colder, and as it gets colder, there's going to be issues with our neighbors, there's going to be issues with our small businesses, where people could just go over there and try to get something. I understand all the issues, but for us, this is an emergency. And once staff came up with this language, what I'm seeing is, it just makes sense. It's very simple what we're talking about here. We're talking about procurement. We're talking about making sure that our zoning, our permits, and our laws are in place to protect the city of Minneapolis residents, that we can override them in order to get this Navigation Center in place before winter comes, and winter is coming, and there's already been deaths. So I understand my colleagues, you know, taking the responsibility and making sure that we're fiscally responsible, but we have to be responsible to the people that live in this, in this tent. And we have talked about this. Every single one of us has made comments along the lines of, we are going to do our best, we are going to go above and beyond in order to make sure that this hardship is alleviated. And what we have today is simple language. This is not saying that we, you know, we're going to do A, B, and C, and D, and we're going to pay every single penny. This is just saying that to take the first step, we have to make sure that we overcome some of the hurdles that can take us weeks and months in order for us to get this navigation site. So, you know, I would love my colleagues to support this motion and to make sure that we send the right message, because we have the media here as well. And what message are we going to send to those people that we promised we were going to help a week ago, two weeks ago? What are we going to say? That the city of Minneapolis council hasn't made up their mind? That the city of Minneapolis council wants a couple more weeks to deliberate? That we can't make a quick decision? You know, that's the message we're going to send. The message we're going to send is, you know, our own internal mechanisms means more than their lives, means more than their warmth, means more than the promises that we made. And I think I thank city staff, and I understand how much pressure they're under because they had to come up with this, you know, they, I don't think they're enjoying being in front of us and answering all our questions, but we have to, as policymakers, we have to make the decision, and we have to make this first decision. And I, as the Chair of Ways and Means, I'm delighted that all the, you know, monetary mechanisms are going to come through our committee, and all of you will be able to be there and participate in that. But I think this has to be done in order to send the right message, which is, we are doing something about it, we're trying to get everything done before winter because God forbid we don't get this done and people are injured or hurt or even die because of the cold. This is going to be on us, it's going to be on this council that has made so much promises to the people of the encampment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with Councilmember Worsami that the original motion as proposed is us getting ahead of the problem instead of responding to the problem. So we do need to just clearly understand that the language here before us does not write a blank check for everyone, does not bypass any council authority or gives the mayor the entire key to the city. So I would like to see if Mark Ruff could please join us at the dais and just walk us through the specifics of this language as it applies to policies and procedures of the city relating to how we spend money and how we would end up paying for trailers and so forth.
Sure. President Bender, Councilmember Conno, thank you. Mark Ruff, the city CFO. This is a healthy opportunity to step back and, you know, on any state of emergency, and it's used as a more specific example, if we were to stand up the Emergency Operations Center, which we're not proposing to do, but I'm just saying that what we train for is even there where you are making 30-second decisions on staff, our procurement staff is there to make sure that there are not other alternatives, you know, so if they're using one supplier that seems twice as much as it should be, our procurement staff will, before our contract is signed, will push back. So certainly know that there are mechanisms in place that we already follow and have practiced for in these cases that just don't allow CPED staff, not that we don't trust our CPED staff, but there is another eye watching the expenditures, okay? So that's an overarching framework, which ties into, I think, Councilmember Conno, your specific question, which is, how do we make progress without actually committing dollars? I think I would submit to you, we do this on a regular basis based on direction from council and actions from council, which is, we need an indication from council that you want us to come forward with a comprehensive plan. And some of that comprehensive plan will require vendors to essentially donate their time in anticipation of at least a reasonable expectation that we will employ them. And as Mr. Frank was, I think, correctly saying, is, without a reasonable expectation, those vendors are not going to take the time and will say, we will wait until the city council has endorsed at least the direction of your plan. We will not commit contracts, we will not commit expenditures until we come forward to you with a comprehensive plan. If the council wants us to come with more than one plan, we can do that, just know that it'll take us a little longer to come with two plans, right? And so right now, our understanding of the direction from the council has come back to us with the most effective and efficient plan that you can muster in a short period of time. But I can just tell you that our staff, and my staff is the procurement staff, will not endorse expenditures until you, as a council, has approved them. And you were clearly saying this morning that you're not going to approve expenditures until we get through the regular process, and I think that's a wise move. But I also would endorse Mr. Frank's caution that without at least an indication of direction and an indication of support, then we will have to be working on three or four plans in order to guess what your direction is, and that will slow the process down. So I think that's the best I can do in terms of the summary, and I think from an accounting and a procurement perspective, we are comfortable with the council president's amendment, but would not recommend any further restriction of the language.
Councilmember Allison.
I'm not done talking.
Sorry. Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam President. So I would like to call the question on a motion to vote on the original language, adding Council President Bender's amended language about, that begins, provided, however, that any expenditure or appropriation of city funds shall be brought before the city council, except to the extent to the degree that the same is structured within existing city policies, delegating expenditure authority to the various departments and divisions of the city enterprise, not accepting the securing the temporary housing strike through.
Councilmember Conno has moved an amendment to the motion that adds the language that everyone has in front of them. And so I'll wait for the clerk to add an ability for councilmembers to comment. Councilmember Pomisano.
Madam President, to clarify, what I heard Councilmember Conno do was move the amendment that's in front of you and call the question on that amendment.
Okay.
So that's a joint motion put together. We need a two-thirds vote to pass the closing of debate and vote, so we'd need eight of the 12 who are here.
Okay.
To close that piece and then move to vote on the amendment as forwarded.
Okay, thank you. I misunderstood the motion. So we have two motions. The first, one is to call the question that is not debatable, correct? So clerk, please call the roll on the motion to call the question on the amendment.
Councilmember Jenkins.
No.
Schrader.
No.
Worsami.
Aye.
Allison.
No.
Goodman.
No.
Johnson.
Question, Mr. Clerk, was there a second on that call to question?
I believe there was a second from Councilmember Gordon. I'll look to Gordon for confirmation. Yes.
No.
Pomisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
I don't think we have eight votes anymore. I'll abstain and defer to my colleagues.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
No.
President Bender.
No.
There are four i's, seven n's, and one extension. That does not pass.
The motion fails. That brings us back to the discussion of the amendment. Councilmember Pomisano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the potential to be overly pedantic, I have a question about your specific amendment. When you say "to the extent, to the degree," is that redundant? Do we just want to pick one phrase or the other? Or is there, if there is some additional meaning behind that, I was just a little bit confused. When you say, "to the extent, to the degree," is that redundant? Do we just want to pick one phrase or the other? Or is there, if there is some additional meaning behind that? I was just a little bit confused.
Uh, the city attorney drafted this language along with the city clerk, so I could defer to them, um, on that question. It was, it was, the, the question from Councilmember Pomisano is, is the phrase, "to the extent," followed by the phrase, "to the degree," a typo or a redundancy that could be removed? And it's a, Ms. Segal.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Madam President, uh, in an overabundance of my typing, I probably could just say, "before the city council, except to the degree that the same is structured."
Except to, except to the degree.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Councilmember Pomisano. Um, so we'll incorporate that, I think, into the motions as we move forward here. Um, I put myself into queue. I, I support, um, the idea that Councilmember Fletcher raised to add a two-week timeframe to this, um, so that we may pause and, um, understand better from staff what the final proposal is. I just want to be clear that I have not given my support to spending $1.5 million on trailers surrounded by a fence. I will say that again and again, very clearly. If I, if I have or the council has given the impression that we have approved that, my personal position today is no, because I do not have enough information from anyone to support that today. Um, so my concern is that by taking each of these incremental urgent decisions, we are giving our staff the impression that we support spending that much money on that particular solution with no operator identified, and I don't support that. I just want to be very clear, that's my position. Um, and so in the spirit of collaboration and trying to help support our collective, um, you know, goal here of helping people in need, um, I think that's, you know, we keep being, putting these positions to make bad votes with no information. And I'm frustrated by that, very frustrated. This is not how we should be operating. This is not how we should be running the city of Minneapolis. I could support this with more confidence if we added a timeframe that gave us a clear signal to our staff to pause and bring us an actual proposal so we can consider with information from people who are stakeholders in the community, who are telling us, who can give us their feedback on, on a specific proposal for a specific amount of money. And I just want to say, this, this money is coming out of a affordable housing fund. You know, this is, this is money that would be going to helping people in need no matter what. So I just want to continue to just pause and reflect on if this is, this is the right solution, if trailers are the right solution, the best we can do. Councilmember Ellison.
Uh, well, I first wanted to clarify that, um, uh, I had not noticed that I missed a call from the mayor yesterday, and so I wanted to acknowledge that he did call and leave a message. I missed that, uh, and so wanted to clarify that, um, and, uh, and, uh, and say that that wasn't intentional, just didn't notice. Um, what I, uh, what, what I do want to also echo is that when I mentioned earlier that we don't exactly know what we're voting on, I think, um, it's to council president Bender's point that, um, you know, we're voting on, on this emergency language, but are we also sort of, uh, inadvertently voting on this trailers and a fence option, right? Um, I'd really want to see, uh, a design, right? I'd really want to know that we're not putting people in sort of like, um, something that's going to look, uh, uh, really sort of like, um, horrible and not feel good for people to live in. Uh, I think the question of, you know, there's the question of moving fast. There's also the question of, will people go if we're kind of subjecting them to, um, uh, these trailers with a fence put around it? And I feel like that's kind of been a huge question mark. Um, I've heard sort of different things about, well, the design's not final, it kind of is final, uh, and we just kind of have no idea. Um, and what I wanted, what I want to make sure is that we're not putting people in, um, uh, the kind of conditions that they're avoiding in some of the harsher, um, uh, shelter conditions, that we're not sort of signing people up to, uh, to, to, to be placed in the exact kind of conditions that they're, uh, that they're avoiding, um, with the shelters. And so, um, you know, I get that, that we're voting on the language in front of us, but are we then kind of inadvertently, uh, voting on the design, uh, of, of this, uh, of this shelter? Uh, and that's really unclear to me. Uh, so, uh, that is why I'm still sort of on the fence about whether or not, you know, that we should move forward in this way. Uh, and I would love to be able to, uh, to talk to not just staff, but also, um, someone who has had to, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to be, you know, a, a city that handles the encampments, uh, well. You know, when we look at, uh, examples around the nation about, uh, these encampments, uh, we've seen city after city really, really struggle to handle them well. And I, I think we're struggling here too, but I think that we're looking to get it the most right. And are we putting ourselves in a position to get it the most right? Um, you know, will people move into an area that sort of looks really bleak and has a fence around it? I don't know. Um, and, and by voting for this, are we also voting on the, on the design? Um, uh, that's, that's unclear to me. So, um, yeah, just wanted to name that. And also clarify the communication with the mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. I support the amendment to clarify the language. I appreciate us having that in front of us. For staff, I'd appreciate if we can follow up after this meeting. I was down at the encampment yesterday and I think they have some, that I heard some ideas on how this could be done better than kind of the direction we're going in. And so I'd like to at least discuss that, uh, with you all. And so hopefully we can meet today about that. And I just have a kind of a technical clarification or confirmation question for our city attorney. Is it possible to do this with a resolution or do we have to declare a state of emergency specifically existing in the homeless encampment in order to waive this? Or can we just do a resolution to waive having to follow the procurement process? I wasn't exactly clear on that. If that's already been answered, I'm sorry, but just wanted to confirm.
Uh, Councilmember, um, Johnson, uh, and members of the council, under this state law, it's only during an emergency or disaster that you can use these provisions. So you could not just do a resolution, for example, saying, "we're now waiving state law around procurement and bidding." Does that help answer the question?
That does, thanks. I just appreciate that being confirmed. I thought that was the case, but wanted to clarify.
You're absolutely correct, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gordon.
I just wanted to clarify that the motion before us does not, um, in any way, um, say anything about what specific type of housing it is. It just says it's temporary housing. We're not, this isn't a site plan before us. This isn't an operating management plan or anything like that.
Councilmember Kano.
So I just wanted to share, um, that I believe it's been noted a couple of times by staff that the most expedient type of housing that would be available for the folks who are out there on the wall is going to have to be some kind of mobile unit, some kind of a trailer composition. Um, I don't know that we have other options. We're not going to be able to build a building. We're not going to be able to put up some kind of massive dome. Um, there's just sort of a continual staff presentation on this effort that has identified the trailers as the most quick and fast way to provide housing for the folks who are out there on, on the tents. Um, and I would just hope that we can really resolve this today and not add another two weeks. I think another two weeks is a very privileged move. And I think we have done extensive work on this topic. Extensive work on this topic over the last couple of weeks. Um, and I would hope that we're really thinking about how can we, as a council, prioritize the needs of the folks that are out there right now, who don't have a warm bed to sleep tonight, who won't be able to escape the torrent that we've survived this, earlier this week, um, the very, very bizarre heavy rain that might have happened on Wednesday or Tuesday. So, um, I, I'm not quite sure what we're looking for when we're saying, let's take another week, two weeks to do this. We have our top-notch staff here who have been looking at this issue for the last couple of days and we lean on their expertise many times to help us make decisions. And I don't think that if we somehow see that, if we approve this today, that, you know, if it goes wrong next week or the week after, that we can't amend it or that we can't stop it. I mean, those things happen all the times as long, as long as there's seven votes. And the broader issue that I wanted to just raise is, um, this notion, if, if people are really interested in throwing down on this issue and really figuring it out and thinking about it every day and every week, that we need to establish some kind of coordinating committee and that the council members who are really interested in shaping this effort show up to that meeting and that that meeting is convened with staff and with community organizers who are on the ground, providing support for the encampment, as imperfect as that support might be, where it is a place where we could troubleshoot and we could share updates and it could be a public meeting and it could have it out in the neighborhood and everyone that wants to know what's going on can show up. And these are ideas I floated by our city coordinator, by Councilmember Gordon, where there's just a lot of information flying around about this issue and I think people are just kind of grabbing at it when it come, it hits their desk. But if you're really interested in figuring out how to shape this and carry it forward and, um, and be a proactive player in the conversation, then I think we should really figure out how to establish a task force or a coordinating committee on this and assign council members to it and make sure that the community is involved and make sure that there's staff that are present and, you know, maybe we meet Monday mornings, first thing Monday mornings, what's going on with the camp? What are the plans? Who's going to be allowed to live there? Who's not? Hey, last week I had a report about this. How are we addressing it? Hey, guess what? There was a third death. How are we as a community dealing with that? How are we addressing it? So I just wanted to publicly put that out there because it is really frustrating to, um, hear of so much interest in how this conversation moves forward, but no real leadership in bringing people together to constructively solve this conversation instead of spending 45 minutes here debating whether or not we should take action on this, um, item to expedite the support that the camp needs, that our residents need, that council members here are saying they want. So I share your frustrations. I'm just coming from a very different perspective.
Councilmember Ellison.
Um, I just wanted to point out the fact that, you know, uh, you know, I asked the question of like, are we inadvertently voting on the design? And then, you know, uh, my colleagues, which I don't fault you for, because I think it is that unclear, literally just consecutively said the opposite thing. You know, Councilmember Gordon said, "There's no design. We're not voting on that." Councilmember Kano said, "Yeah, it's going to be trailers." And so I, you know, I, I, I hate to just sort of call that out, but I just wanted to, I wanted to acknowledge that that literally just happened right after I made my statement. And I think it speaks to how unclear this is. And I really resent the fact that anybody who cautions, who, who is, who is saying that, you know, "We're trying to get this right and we have a lot of, and we want to be cautious about how we proceed and make sure we proceed correctly," sort of gets met with this, uh, this, this notion that you don't care, you don't want to move fast enough, all of that kind of stuff. And I don't think that that's what's happening at all. I think that we don't want to put people in, uh, a, a situation that we're really, really going to be regretting come winter. Uh, and I think that that's a possibility here. Um, and, uh, and so I just wanted to acknowledge that that's, that that's, that that's what I just heard. Um, and so, uh, uh, and so, yeah, I, I'm, I'm all for urgent action and then the, and the notion that, you know, any suspicion of this, uh, of this timeline or any suspicion of this state of emergency is, is, uh, is an indication of a lack of urgency. I just think that, I think, I think that's false.
Thank you. I have myself in queue. I want to move to amend the amended motion to add the words "effective" until October 19th. After declaring a state of emergency, that would give us the two-week timeframe between now and the city council meeting that would move this forward, but then we could renew, um, a state of emergency if desired by the council at that time. And then I also just wanted to make a comment that, um, and maybe I could invite staff up again. I feel like I've asked directly many times, um, is there an option on the table? So this literally gives you, like, our direction through this is to secure temporary housing. Can you clarify what actions we'll take between now and October 19th to secure temporary housing? If the, that temporary housing is trailers or if there are any other options under consideration by staff that are not trailers?
Madam President, as I tried probably unsuccessfully to say to Councilmember Fletcher earlier, the key here and the topic of this motion and why it's important is so that we and the contractor, contractors that we are working with know that the bidding provisions don't and won't apply, right? So with respect, if you choose to add the language that you just mentioned, Council President, they won't know that. And so that there will be a schedule impact while we wait to see if the council chooses to waive those bidding requirements at your, during the next cycle before we can proceed, knowing that we don't have to do the bidding. Okay? So it's a schedule impact. And I haven't said it well again because you look puzzled.
But this literally declares a state of emergency until October 19th, at which time we could renew the state of emergency. So that shouldn't create any delay.
Madam President, the, I'll try, I'll try again, I'll try to use different words. So the, um, knowing that the bidding requirements don't apply as to getting trailers, as to working with the Red Lake Nation's contractor, working with the architecture and engineering firms, is what lets us hit the timeline of early December, right? Since you needing to renew it next cycle wouldn't be us knowing that, we would have to act like, well, maybe bidding is going to apply. We're not, like, I guess we should bid it now. We would not be able to, not be able to hit the early December timeline.
When will the bidding actually occur? Is it going to be in the next two weeks?
Madam President, we have not pursued a timeline that includes bidding because it won't allow for an early December navigation center opening.
And just, I mean, I think the critical question that many council members are asking is, is there any other structure under consideration that are not trailers?
Thank you for the second part of your question. So as to the fir-, just to recap, as to the first part, adding an expiration date or a needed renewal date for the, the bidding provisions, the procurement provisions, doesn't accomplish the schedule help that this, that Councilmember Worsami's motion would otherwise accomplish, period. What we are pers-, okay, uh, what we are pursuing to answer your second question, Madam President, is trailers. Because of the contaminated nature of the site that the council has selected, we can't put structures directly on the ground that will have people living in them.
So, thank you. So this gives you the indication from council that you want us, that we want you to move forward in procuring trailers for the site.
Madam President, this lets us know that the, that the bidding rules would not apply and in any event, we would not have the budget authority or the contracting ability to sign contracts for trailers and other things until after Ways and Means next cycle. I hope you also hear me saying that the, the, um, the kind of housing that we are pursuing is trailers.
Okay, thank you. And I just, to clarify, I think the purpose of adding this two-week timeframe, so I've actually managed government contracts. I understand that, that the idea that we would surprise you in two weeks to say, "Oh, actually, we want you to go through the procurement process," doesn't accomplish your goal. But I think that what I heard from staff this morning privately and again publicly here today was that you're hearing from council that we want you to just move forward as fast as possible, no matter what. And I'm trying to clarify that that is not my intention, that I feel very uncomfortable with the direction we are moving and I have not heard from any experts. I think a lot of my colleagues have not had the opportunity to hear from whichever project manager will be selected by the group. Um, and we've been asking for this. To be clear, every single time we've talked about this, it's been in every staff direction, myself and other council members have, every single time we've talked about this, ask for a budget, ask for more clarification on the design, and we haven't seen it yet. And so this is not new information that we're asking for. It's, it is still under development by the group. But I just want to be very clear that my intention here in helping to try to move this forward and accomplishing the goals that we are set out to do, that we're not giving any indication to staff that no matter what, we want you to go forward as fast as possible. So I, my intention with the "effective" until August 19th language was to give us a two-week time period to get that information that we've been asking for, for weeks, so that we may be able to make a more informed decision, um, about the final, um, objective here in the final budget appropriation and the final design of the site. Um, so now I've kind of created a little, um, so my amendment has moved us over into a new column, but I know Councilmember Goodman was in queue, so I'll call in Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm reluctant to wade into this, but I'm going to in an effort to try to get us to some sort of decision. We seem to be flailing due to a lack of information. I'm not sure where that information is being kept, but it's clearly something the mayor's office knows about, some people know about, others do not. That is causing frustration. I love Councilmember Kano's point- I love Councilmember Kano's point and idea that there really ought to be a work team made up of council members, along with our highest level professional staff and the mayor's office, to address this with an adult-sized phone tree, where each council member then is assigned others to bring them up to speed on the issues. This is not unlike any other large issue that we have faced in the city, and we are flailing due to a lack of communication and holding on to information for fear of criticism, when in fact, it's, I think should be quite the opposite. We should be sharing information so that people can feel comfortable with where we're at. A good example of this would be this trailer scenario. I'm not super comfortable with trailers, but perhaps the county and others who work on this issue say trailers are what is needed and that's the only option. To date, I have not heard that said out loud. So I'm, just have a lack of comfort with the concept of trailers, but I haven't heard an argument as to what the alternatives are. And I think I'm kind of summarizing what a lot of people feel. We are in a governance situation where power is diffused, and that is not ideal for making high-level decisions. And so far, those who have claimed power for this issue that really ought to have been handled by the county as the leadership in the first place, don't know how to share that diffused power with others. And that has become why we continue to have argument after argument in public, in council meetings, rather than working these things out as they should be, for the benefit of the residents of the encampment. Because I do believe that everybody is working towards that common solution. So I think that what we, the best thing we could do today is move forward with what has been suggested, with a commitment to this afternoon, put together a work team made up of leadership staff, the mayor's office, and council members, who will then work to answer some of these questions and share that information in real time with everyone. It's too hard for one person to do it, anyway. So it's not working to have one person try to reach everybody via text and cell phone calls and that kind of thing in the middle of the night. So I think that we shouldn't be hung up on how long the emergency declaration is for. It's clear the emergency declaration is being put into place in order to work around some onerous procurement issues. But what is more clear is that there is a discomfort with the direction that we're moving in and how much it's going to cost because there's not enough information to make an informed decision about whether or not that is the direction we should go in. We could have an argument about how much money we should spend or whether or not people should be in trailers, but we shouldn't do it before we understand what all the options are. So that's kind of how I see it. And I would urge us to get our act together, everybody, and try to remember that we're working on behalf of people who are homeless, facing a rainstorm, entering winter, and we just want to be able to do the best we can. And also maybe noting for the future that we shouldn't jump up and volunteer to solve the world's problems at the city level alone, where our staff are struggling to do their jobs, respond to a new budget, and otherwise run the city. Because many things will not happen as a result of the amount of dysfunction that has gone on with the decision-making process surrounding how we go forward. Thank you for paying attention to me.
Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. So Councilmember Goodman, did you put something on the table here about us voting on a structure, an organized way for us to tackle this work? Is that part of the amendment now? All right, I'm hearing that, I'm hearing that we're in too deep. We got too many layers going on right now to this conversation. So I just wanted to say that I'm against adding any kind of limit to this. I'd be happy to entertain that as a future amendment once we actually make the commitment to address this in a expedient way and codify this state of emergency, which many people in the community believe it is. And I think many residents and voters would actually welcome that signal from the city council. I don't think we have to put some kind of arbitrary or a non-realistic deadline on this just to, you know. I'm not going to finish that sentence. So I also wanted to just, for the public record, note that the motions that are before us right now, none of them discuss a specific design. And so while I did try to be helpful in providing context, larger context about the conversation we've been having over the last three to four weeks, I just want to note for the public and for those that will be watching this video clip later, that this does not say anything about trailers. And so trying to, I guess, isolate this conversation or boil it down to that is a disservice for the fact that what we're trying to do today, those of us who support this motion to declare an emergency in the city to expedite our procurement processes, which essentially means we don't have to go through the process of notifying a number of stakeholders via the newspaper for 10 days that we're looking for a contractor to do some cleanup of a site, that we don't have to go through all of the red tape that would normally take months and months for the city to get through. What we're doing is prioritizing the needs and the realities of the people experiencing homelessness on the eve of winter here, to ensure that the city is able to step up and be a leader with the Red Lake Nation, with the community members who have been pushing the city to take action on this. I hope that there's more push for the county to take action as well. We know that this is not going to be the city's burden alone. We know that there will be other players, and there are other players that are being engaged. And we as a council need to figure out how to bring the power and voice of our platform to help get other jurisdictions to chip in and to step up. And clearly, it's taking the 13 of us a lot of time to figure out how and when to show up in this conversation. But just for the public record and for the folks watching the video clip, I do want to just acknowledge that the information before us, the action before us, has nothing to do with trailers. It has in fact to do with us declaring an emergency to help expedite the city processes to ensure we are addressing the realities before us. There is no blank check before us. There is no making sure that all the money is spent and that we are signing a $1.5 million agreement with anyone. All of those processes and procedures would still be in place. I think before us is the question of, do we want to address this reality now, or do we want to kick it down the road for two weeks? I don't think we should add a time component to this. I think we should keep that off the table and stick to the original language as much as possible. I understand that there's people here, very powerful people here who want to change that. And we'll see where the votes lie on that. But just because I know this is publicly broadcast, I wanted to make sure that my position was clearly stated in that the conversation I shared about the designs and the type of housing that would be available by December, it does not have to do with us signing up to that right now. It has to do with me providing helpful context in a conversation where, that we've been having over the last month or so. And I believe that there are more conversations happening around the long-term housing solutions for this issue. And that's where we can get more dynamic and more creative and more complex in the types of buildings we think about, in the geographies we think about. And this is again why I believe we do need a centralized coordinating committee to really dig down and deep on these issues because I think many of us are being pulled in 100 different directions, and we're not bringing our best foot forward when, when we're not being proactive as council members outside of this table right now to figure out how we're giving this conversation direction.
Councilmember Fletcher.
I think Gordon.
Thank you, Council President. I think Gordon was next in the queue. Did you?
You're right. It's Gordon.
Oh, Councilmember Gordon. Sorry.
Thank you, Council President. I'll try not to take it personally. I know I talk a lot and I guess it has some reactions sometimes. I just wanted to talk in opposition to the timeline because I think it doesn't accomplish what Councilmember Worsami's motion was intended to accomplish. But that I do think in a separate motion, we could potentially have another staff direction that clarifies high expectations for getting more details and more clarity somewhere else. And I'd be supportive of finding an alternative way to address your concerns outside of locking us into that timeframe as another amendment to this motion.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. I just wanted to say, because I think this idea was sort of attributed to me because I did ask the question, but I think I've heard staff's answer on this. And I think it is important that we give people the ability to come up with plans to write their project management timelines in a way that assumes that we're not going to require a bidding process. So I'm going to oppose the amendment to add a two-week timeline. I think the question's been asked, and I think it was important for it to be asked, but I appreciate the answer and the response. And I'll echo many of my colleagues' sentiments that we want more detail and that obviously we want to be engaged in this. And I think a work group is a great idea. And I think let's, let's keep moving forward on improving our process and making sure that we understand how things are moving forward.
Is there any further discussion on, so this would be the amendment to add effective until October 19th. I just want to clarify that my intention here was not to set a timeline, but rather to give the council the option to vote again on extending the state of emergency in two weeks because we've heard so much back and forth and so many questions and confusion from council members. So I'm going to continue to support this idea that we would add effective until October 19th. Functionally, it may not make that big of a difference because it may be that the council intends to have an indefinite state of emergency on this site. But for me, my comfort level was to have more detail before we made that declaration. Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. I think we should go back to what Councilmember Gordon said, which is basically, we could still have this state of emergency and have a review. And I know there was a great deal of frustration that we're not getting a lot of clarity from staff. But we could have the state of emergency with the amendment that you have and have a timeline, staff direction, just like Councilmember Gordon correctly suggested, that we can come back in two weeks on the 19th of October to get more clarity with regards to the structure, with regards to the budget, but still for procurement's sake, to have this emergency still in place. So we can have a parallel timeline.
Thank you. And it sounds like that's the intention from staff, is to come back with more detail at ways and means, and then again through council next cycle. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
No.
Worsami.
No.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
No.
Gordon.
No.
Kano.
No.
Reich.
Nope.
Fletcher.
No.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are four ayes, eight nays.
That motion fails. Councilmember Goodman has put herself in queue to make a motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to move to suspend the rules to clear the pending amendment by Councilmember Kano and insert the following motion into the Worsami motion that is in front of us. And if not, I'll do it as a substitute if I need to. The language will read, pursuant to Council Rule 4, Section 3, establish a working group composed of council members, the mayor's office, and city executives from relevant departments to address the matter of the homeless encampment located in the vicinity of Franklin and Hiawatha to plan and take appropriate actions to consider and make recommendations as appropriate to the city council for decision-making. And I would also like to add to my motion language that insists that the county participate in the operations of any such shelter. Perhaps the city attorney could clarify the county portion for me since I've got 100 emails sitting in front of me.
And to be clear, that's been in every staff direction we have given since we started this process. Ms. Segal, did you want to respond?
Madam President and Councilmember Goodman, did you want to add a request that the county participate in the work group with an elected official perhaps and, and staff leadership?
Yes.
And then you could also include that county participation is critical to the city's position on this?
Madam President.
Councilmember Goodman.
I recognize that we have asked this a bunch of times, but we're not getting any action. So I think at this, I think at this point, should my motion prevail to create a work group, the request for county leadership staff and an elected official would be an official request from us rather than our staff asking and the council members, myself included, quite frankly, kind of gnashing teeth to get someone to listen to us. Perhaps this official motion could be sent and then, and perhaps the mayor then could call the county board president and say this motion passed and directly ask the county to assign someone to serve.
Yes, it sounds like so far conversations have not gone well about getting commitment from county funds. Although we seem to have some commitment from their existing funding sources. Councilmember Gordon is in queue to speak to Councilmember Goodman's amendment.
Well, I appreciate the amendment. I think I would have preferred if we could have had it as a separate action and it's not all tied up in the other action that I thought was a little bit cleaner. So that's a little bit confusing. I also want to at least note that the Housing Policy and Development Committee is also willing and ready to take on some of this work through the normal processes. I think if there's interest in creating a task group, it makes a lot of sense. But there's also already a coalition work group that the coordinator's office is heading up that people could maybe participate in or it could be expanded. So maybe we'll hear back later based on if this passes, what kind of framework the coordinator thinks should go into the work group. But I think participation in that might also be helpful. So I guess I won't try to convince it not to be stuck in as an amendment. I will note though that I don't have anything in writing for this amendment. And I think the rules say we're supposed to have our amendments in writing, and it does sound a little bit complicated. So it would be nice to have something in writing to understand how it fits in with the other two paragraphs. Although I think there's still the Kano amendment that we haven't approved adding yet that was actually what Bender had offered as a substitute. So I'd happy to, if it made more sense, we could go back and approve those first two pieces and then prove this as a separate item. But I guess I just offer that as a suggestion, a way we might deal with this and get through it more quickly.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. The clerk was ready to weigh in. Councilmember Goodman is in queue, and I also have a thought to offer.
I was merely going to offer, Madam President, so that there's clarity around what's pending before the council now. It's the original base motion moved forward by Councilmember Worsami. That still stands. And then I have attempted to capture what Councilmember Goodman offered, which would supplement that. I'll read it to make sure I've captured it. And if that's appropriate, then I can email it around to members. So it's in writing in front of you. So the base motion by Councilmember Worsami, followed by this amendment from Councilmember Goodman, pursuant to Council Rule 4, Section 3, establishing a working group composed of council members, the mayor's office, and city executives from relevant departments to address the matter of the homeless encampment located in the vicinity of Franklin and Hiawatha avenues to plan and take appropriate actions and to consider and make recommendations as appropriate to the city council for decision-making. The city will formally extend an invitation to Hennepin County to invite active participation from elected and appointed leadership from the county to participate in the working group to provide appropriate support, resources, and leadership as necessary and appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And is it possible to email that language to the council? And that would be included in this underlying motion by Councilmember Worsami?
Correct. And I would only look to Councilmember Goodman that I've captured in a satisfactory way, the motion she intended to bring forward. And then I'm happy to email it around. Okay?
Thank you. And I think my comment was to maybe underscore something that Councilmember Goodman said, which is that we have on multiple occasions asked for more detail and more commitment from our funding partners, particularly on the operation side. And it seems to not be coming forward along with other decisions that we are being asked to make. So I like the idea of being clear in this particular motion that we still have that expectation that the county would be an operating partner in this facility that the council is approving moving forward with today, asking our staff to procure the contracts needed to build it. Is there any further discussion on Councilmember Goodman's amendment? We do have the email just now from our clerk. I can read it again as folks read it, just for the record. Just for the record, pursuant to Council Rule 4, Section 3, to establish a working group composed of council members, the mayor's office, and city executives from relevant departments to address the matter of the homeless encampment located in the vicinity of Franklin and Hiawatha avenues to plan and take appropriate actions and to consider and make recommendations as appropriate to the city council for decision-making. The city will formally extend an invitation to Hennepin County to invite active participation from elected and appointed leadership from the county to participate in the working group to provide appropriate support, resources, and leadership as necessary and appropriate. I would note, I think the intention here would not be to exclude any partners that our staff would recommend, including from the table of partners that I know is meeting very regularly and includes state and community partners as well as the Red Lake Nation that owns the site. So I think that's understood here that we would be open to adding to this, but that this would be the minimum expectation. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with you and your comments. This is not to take power away from the Housing Policy Committee. This is not to say that the staff work team is not working. It's to delegate one place where the city's efforts will be and that council members will be at the table so that there will be better communication. This seems to me, overall, to be a communication problem. And I think it's a communication problem, quite frankly, with the county, too. Because when I called them out on not participating, I got blowback like nothing I've ever seen. So I called it out. I got yelled at. I now am trying to find a more appropriate way to invite their involvement without calling them out. The last thing I want to note is I believe that Councilmember Kano's amendment was something that Councilmember Bender brought forward, and I don't want to forget that, which was the language regarding that the funding should be going through the Ways and Means process and the Ways and Means Committee and that this is not a blank check. That amendment, which I'm summarizing, I'm not meaning to eliminate it. But I don't want to get involved in a process argument about how that could be incorporated as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say that, of course, I appreciate Councilmember Goodman's motion to codify some of the sentiments that I had shared here today. I wasn't sure if people had the appetite to kind of tackle that right now. I did just want to put something on the table, and I don't think I'm going to move it as an amendment just because I do want the focus to stay on having the city get their act together around this. So the sentiment is that we do need to figure out a way to coordinate whatever we're trying to decide and assess with community groups, with community leaders, and with the folks who are working at the encampment. And so we should figure out a way to make that happen so that it is a conversation that's open and accessible to folks outside of City Hall. But again, I respect what we have now because I do think that there's sort of a different culture of working on these issues. And scheduling on our end is very difficult, and getting staff together with leadership is difficult. And so I don't want to delay that part of the work happening while we try to figure out how to connect with community. So I do hope that, you know, once this work group is established, that we can figure out a more predictable schedule and an outward-facing, consistent communications mechanism to engage and receive feedback from community folks about the decisions that are being made by their local government and hopefully with the county on this issue. So thank you, Councilmember Goodman.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a question for the clerk. With how this is structured with the motions, does... And I appreciate Councilmember Goodman's intent to keep this Bender amendment language that was moved by Councilmember Kano. Is that still... Would that still be within this motion? Have we structured this as... The language you sent was an addition on top of the Kano motion? Because I know there's also this notion of suspending the rules at one point, but it sounded like that was an option. The rules weren't suspended. It was a motion.
Madam President, for the sake of clarity, if this is the council's will, I have just sent forward another revised revised motion, which has the base motion originally brought forward by Councilmember Worsami. It includes then a second provision, noted as Kano amendment, that leaves that in, and another one that is the Goodman amendment, so that there would be two provisos added as amendments to the Worsami base motion. And that entire package of actions or directives then would be in front of the council now for consideration.
Thank you.
Assuming that there is no objection from anyone on the council.
I appreciate that, and I think that was the intent. And I'm glad to have the language out. So thank you for sending that.
Thank you. So with that, my intention would be to call the roll on the two amendments together, one by Councilmember Kano and one by Councilmember Goodman.